Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America. And to the people of our states. Our citizens, our nations. And our government. And our liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so hello everyone. Tonight we have two board members that are participating remotely. The select board has a open meeting law remote access policy that we have approved. It's the minimum requirements for remote participation are members of a public body who participate remotely and all persons present at the meeting location shall be clearly audible to each other. We can all hear each other, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. In a quorum of the body, including the chair, or in the chair's absence, the person is authorized to chair the meeting shall be physically present at the meeting location, which we have a quorum here of three. And members of the public bodies who participate remotely may vote and shall not be deemed absent. So.
An inquiry. When did we accept that this policy?
Policy.
I think it was in 2017.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
Before my time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, public comment is to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chairperson. The select board will not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the chair. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. Board and committee reports reported the chair. I signed the PR 2212 for the select board, the PR 2212 and the PR 2213 for Julie O'Brien, the PR 2214 for the select board, the PR 2214 for Julie O'Brien, and the VW 2215 for Staples.
Do we need a motion to accept that? Or is it?
No.
No.
It's just a report.
Perfect.
So now we have grants, gifts, and donations. We have a council on aging donation from Jay Brogan in the amount of $10. I'm going to read these all at once and we can accept them all at once.
Perfect.
We have a council on aging donation from M. Gill for $25. Another council on aging donation from R. D. Stower for $100. We have a council on aging donation for, from M. Smith for another $100. We have a council on aging donation from D. Loring for $300. We also have a police department private citizen donation for $500 and another police department private citizen donation for $250.
Motion to accept the donations as read.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Request for information. I'm, I'm just wondering.
Excuse me, can you do second at first?
Yes, second.
Okay.
No discussion. Oh, well, request for information. I noticed the last meeting we had donations to the police department by private citizens and that tonight we have one for $500 and $250. And now Mr. Brogan or Ms. Brogan, Jay Brogan, who gave $10 to the council on aging donation, their name is listed. Why aren't names listed when people give money to the police department? These are sizable amounts, $500 and $250.
Yeah.
Why don't we acknowledge who they are?
Maybe when the chief comes in, we can ask him, but it could be that they wanted to keep their names anonymous.
Usually that's listed as anonymous.
But we'll have to ask the chief when the chief comes in.
All right. And also what, what account does it go into?
Okay. If it's earmarked for anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, ask the chief for that. So I entertain a motion and I have to approve and I have a second. Let's do a roll call vote. Mike Doyle.
Yes.
Jerry Heavy.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
Jaya Colby.
Yes.
And Alicia Greco, yes. We have public hearings, none. Under new business, we have to approve and sign and revise liquor license, but the ABCC approved a change of manager for Old Town Country Club. So Julie, everything is in order for that, right? Yes, correct. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the revised liquor license for the Old Town Country Club.
Second. Any discussion? Mike and Jaya.
Officer, yes.
So I'll move to a roll call vote. Mike Doyle.
Yes.
Jerry Heavy.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
Jaya Colby.
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. We have town of Newbury business license renewals. At the previous select board meeting, we read them all. And I could, you could say a hold if you wanted to hold to question it, but I'm going to approach it the same way where I read them all at once and then we'll take a roll call vote at the end. If for any reason you want to hold one, please speak loudly so that I hear you that and we'll come back to that one. Okay? Also, if anyone wants to recuse themselves? Yes, and if you need to recuse yourself, you need to speak loudly so that I hear you. Okay, so we have ENG Service, Inc. at 101 Newbury Port Turnpike, units four to five, buy and sell secondhand vehicles. Gary Macheros, DBA Engi Service, Inc., 101 Newbury Port Turnpike, units four to five, auto repair. Gary Macheros, DBA Applied Automotive Technology, Inc., 101 Newbury Port Turnpike, unit four five, auto repair. Elise Guy, DBA Bostonborn, Inc., 25, Newbury, 65 Newbury Port Turnpike Tattoo Shop. Raza Carr Auto Sales, Inc., owner Darcy Machado Morriera, Mori, Moria, Morera, Morera, 86 Newbury Port Turnpike, buy and sell secondhand vehicles. Peter and Michelle and Peter Abram, DBA By Coco, 12 Grove Street, mobile coffee trailer. Fit by John, DBA care of John A. Desmoreau, Jr., 89 Hanover Street, unit number three, general business, personal training. Alana Mastis Mattseys Dunn, DBA Flipping Out Enterprises, 109 High Road, coach and consultant. Henry C. Becker, DBA Henry C. Becker Custom Building, LTD, 8 Riverview Drive, general business. Colby Jackman, DBA outdoor dog training and trails, 48 Low Street is her office and the dog training is taking place at client sites and on public trails. No zone, no onsite boarding or daycare per zoning enforcement officer. Robin Davies, DBA Parker River Dental, 3 Kentway, general business. Sharon Pearson, DBA Pearson Hardware, 6A Fruit Street, general business. Ralph Johnson, Jr., President, DBA Pert Lowell, Inc., Pert Lowell Company, Inc., lanes end boat restoration. Elizabeth Molten Cowie and Martha Molten, DBA Surf Land Bait and Tackle LLC, 30 Plum Island Boulevard, general business bait shop. Brandon Kelly, DBA Store Yourself, Store Yourself Storage, DBA Store Yourself Storage, 12 Kentway, general business self-storage. Matthew Kozasky, DBA Tendocrop Farms, 108 High Road, Retail Foods Common Victular Crafts and Gifts. Raina Bonafina, DBA Walk My Paws, 90 Newbury Port Turnpike Dog Training, Dog Play Care.
Bosun to approve business licenses as read.
Sorry, my voice is going. Second.
Do you want a question?
Yeah, maybe. I have a second. I have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call vote. I'm just going to get my, thank you, Jerry. Mike Doyle.
Yes.
Jerry Heavy.
Yes.
Jeff Walker.
Yes.
Jaya Colby.
Yes.
And Alicia Greco, yes. Thank you. Okay, so we have an emergency manager update. John, Lucy is here, Chief Lucy. We're going to, can we just backpedal a second because Selectwoman Heavy had a question about the police department private citizen donation? Yes, Chief. I noticed when people donate to the council on aging, their name and their amount is listed, but I noticed the last meeting and this meeting, we have individuals and it just says private citizen donation, $500 and $250. Shouldn't we acknowledge them? Why aren't they?
If they want to be sure. I don't know if this is the case, but a lot of times we do get donations, they just want to be anonymous.
Okay.
But I don't know if that was, I never asked them that question, but that's a, that's a good point I sure can ask.
Yeah, because it's a lot of money.
Sure does, yeah.
They should be thanked and usually if people want to be anonymous, it's listed as anonymous.
Mm-hmm.
And if they're not, if, you know, it seems.
They were thanked. I did send a thank you letter, but sure, you know, acknowledgement from your board would be warranted as well, too. I can make that inquiry, absolutely.
Yeah, this is, this to me is a lot of money, $500. And what do, where is it earmarked? Any special place?
That's the whole thing. It doesn't, it's not specially earmarked. What it's used for is uncovered trainings, certain equipments, like when we have to do certifications on the tasers, if we don't have the budgeted to replace the cartridges, the training cartridges or ammunition for, for our qualifications, we can use this as, you know, as part of our training and, or whatever we need for.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we get to that, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I just want to say.
Yeah, wait, I'm looking at you.
The setup you've got with the next door for the people to pick up their kids and stuff, that's really working out really well. I mean, at Christmas time, it was widely used and it's a great idea to have a safe spot to exchange like that.
Yeah, we see a lot of activity there. Yeah, it worked out well.
That's right, ladies, and it was a great idea.
Well, thank you.
Can you explain?
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
Oh, sure. What it is, is with all the online purchases and exchanges through Craigslist and all the online stuff, there's a need for a safe place to make those exchanges. So what we have.
Even childcare. Even childcare.
Well, there's also, you know, custodial, you know, adjudicated custodial arrangements where, you know, they can meet there and do the child exchanges and such like that there. But we usually see a lot of it, people are using it for their, for their purchases online, you know, when they're, they're going through like Facebook Marketplace or something like that. It's a place that, it's a safe place to do it.
Yeah.
You can meet strangers, have a transaction. It's video, it's on our video system. There's two lot, two spaces that are marked, you know, for the exchange site, spaces. And the other thing, too, it kind of deters anybody that's having, trying to facilitate a nefarious encounter, they're probably not going to go to the police station to do it, so.
Well, like I said, this, at Christmas time, it was just, it was nice to see families, the mixed families exchanging the kids and it was, it was, it was just, it was pleasant for you, not, you know, sometimes it can be nasty.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was just, so it was just, it was, it was a well-done idea, well thought of that idea in the first place.
Actually, I will give a shout out to the deputy chief because she did think of that.
Oh, that's good.
So, Patty, so Patty, I thank her.
Yep, absolutely.
From us all.
That was her idea.
The town thanks.
That is a great idea.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so John, do you have an update on the COVID situation?
Yeah, a lot going on, as we're all aware. What I'm going to do is I'm just going to read down my memo, so just, you know, kind of bear with me on this. So as far as the C-19 case, the case status, we started out the, the first week of December with 24 cases and the next week was 33 and the week after that was 46 and now we just closed out with 67. So it's, it's doing exactly what everyone expected after the holiday season, there's an uptick. But the good news is that uptick is still dramatically lower in our community than, than the surrounding communities, so that's nice. But still, it's a shame there's an uptick, but it's a very, very manageable one. So what we're focusing on Unified Command, the discussions we're having, is we're focusing on the slow spread of it as much as possible because, you know, it seems that this Omicron is highly, highly contagious and that's, that's the big gaffe with it, really. It's just, it's going like crazy. So the impact it's having on the workplace is, is, is pretty significant, even in our own department, we're having an impact, town hall, we're having an impact. So we've implemented some protocols that I'm sure you've seen as far as municipal buildings and in my department, how we're, how we're dealing with things as well. And that is mask awareness, you know. So this is where I'm going to refer to my memo, so I do not forget a thing. So like I said, it's been widely reported that the Omicron virus is highly contagious, but much less of a health risk than the prior variants. However, it can still be dangerous to some and have significant negative impacts on town and local business operations. The C-19 Unified Command regularly meets and adjusts our response to the ever-evolving situation. Our goal remains to achieve a balance between safety, health, and practicality in our community and workplaces. Currently, the town employees and the municipal offices are exercising proximity awareness and utilizing masks when encountering the public and each other. The Board of Health has posted reminders on local businesses entry points that wearing a mask indoors in public places is recommended. I'll stop there. Does anybody have any questions or concerns so far?
Yes. You may have it later on in your memo, but what is the protocol or is there a protocol requiring first responders to be vaccinated or even the town workers?
No, there's no, there's no requirement, there's no, as far as, what do you mean, a protocol?
Yeah, is there a requirement that if you're a first responder, a police officer?
There is no requirement. No, it's a, it's a personal choice like for everybody else. So, but what we do, but there are protocols as far as how we respond to the public. We are, you know, we, we wear the masks, we, you know, we follow the same protocols that I just outlined as far as proximity awareness in the department. If we have an encounter with anybody, whether it's an arrestee or whatever, you know, the masks are worn and if we can get the other person, the subject, to wear the mask, we do that. We try to limit our interactions with the public as much as possible. So again, it's all about slowing the process so it's not really, we can still operate, you know. We've had, you know, we've had people in our department that have been sick and it's, it's not, they're back pretty quickly feeling-wise, but they still have the five day, where they have to monitor that and then the five days after with the masks, you know, so they still have the same protocols and we do observe those. But again, we're just trying to slow down having more than one or two or even three in our small department. We have three people.
So I have a question with you.
Sure.
I know the CDC reduced its guidance that they want you to stay, well, before it used to have to quarantine, isolate, quarantine for 10 days. Now they've reduced that to five days?
Mm-hmm.
As you, as a town going by that same standard now?
What we've been doing, what our team, Unified Command is doing, is taking those guidances and trying to implement them, you know, to the best of our ability and what best works for our community. So yes, we're following those guidances because I'm not going to stand before you and tell you I'm a virologist or I'm an expert.
Right.
At all. I don't have a healthcare background at all, so I expect that the people I surround myself with do and we, we communicate, we sit down, usually on a weekly basis, say, okay, what's new, what do we want to do different, what do we need to do different? So I don't know if that answers your question, but I can't.
So currently, is there a mask requirement for people to come into town hall? Do they have to put on a mask?
Is it the mask awareness six feet if you can't maintain six feet?
Yeah, there's a, there's, I can read the, I thought, I thought it went out, but I can read what the directive is. I'd have to pull up on my screen. But basically, it's that. If you're going to be within six feet of somebody, I believe the guidance.
15 minutes?
Well, the guidance is 15 minutes. We've made it more stringent. It's five minutes. If you're going to be interacting with somebody within, I wish I had it in front of me. I think it's three feet, it might be six feet, whatever, whatever it is, for over five minutes, you have to be masked. And you don't, you know, we don't want, there's no loitering in common areas. You do your business and you get out. And that's the, that's what we're doing at the PD and that's what's expected here and I, and I believe that's what's happening here in all the other municipal buildings. So yes, we do take, we don't go less than the guidance, but we want to be a little bit more proactive, a little bit more aggressive, so we kind of took those times and shortened them up a little bit.
Okay, question?
Sure.
You mentioned you don't have a medical or background.
Mm-hmm.
Who on the task force does have a medical background?
Well, public health background is Deb, Deb Rogers. She's a, you know, a health director.
Okay, all right.
And she's in very good communication. I lean on her a lot with DPH and all the experts. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. On the team is myself, Tracy, Deb Rogers, and the fire chief. So, moving on. All right. The COA continues to monitor and provide assistance to the elderly and the financially challenged residents regarding distribution of rapid antigen home tests. They are also assisting with the education of when to use the test. So what happened is these, there was a, 1,080 test kits were provided by the state just before the holiday season.
I got that email.
Yeah. And as Newbury was deemed, you know, a, a community that would benefit from this service and they, and they sent us those, those kits with the intention, the guidance, and everything they gave us was a guidance that that should be for, you know, the elderly, you know, the non-ambulatory, you know, financially challenged, that, that group. So we've been distributing those and we've also been distributing them from the police station for, you know, for people who fit into that category.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Do you have, did you distribute a lot of those? Was there a high need?
The Council on Aging has, there's, they, the last count, I believe, was a kit, two and a half cases and there's 90 per case, so 100 and, 180, you know, 130 something kits and there's two tests per kit. So they've gone out and done, and there's also been some education because this has been getting back to me, we learn as we go. When some people were getting these kits, they thought, I need to do it now. That's why they give me the kits, I need to do that. So there's been some education going with it. Look, no, 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 no. If you, you know, if you have symptoms, you know, that's when you want to do it or if you're going to be encountering a group, you know, if you're going to, you know, some sort of an event, you want to make sure that you're, you're safe for everybody else. So that, you know, there's been some education going along with that as well.
They, they are being used.
They are being used, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Quick question.
Yep.
If I, if I picked one up before I went to an event last week, is there a chance I can get another one because it's been like five days now? Because I'm concerned, I've gotten worse myself and I'm just like, there's, I tested before, I haven't got a test now. So can I get another test to make it over?
Yeah, I, what I was going to say is, right now, those tests that we have are earmarked for, you know, as far as the residents are concerned, you know, of lesser means, you know, and they can't get them themselves.
Okay, all right.
But, you know, absolutely, people come in saying they need the tests. We're not, I'm not asking for tax reports, you know, I'm not, you know, it's, you know, if you say you need them, you know, we will get them out to you.
John, I'd like to say that listening to the process, it seems the town has, we've been lucky in some ways. We've remained kind of consistent and fall within the guidelines and it's certainly going as hoped, even though we have more. I want to compliment the Council on Aging, I want to compliment your team, and I want to compliment the process because it seems, it seems to be going as, and Deb Rogers, because it seems to be going as well as could be expected.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, it's a, it's a, it's a moving target, it's like nailing jello to the wall sometimes, trying to figure out.
If you look at what's going on every place else, all over the country, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah, we're pretty proud of, you know, what's happening and that, and that's a credit to the community, too. You know, they're, you know, they're taking it serious, people are doing what they need to do. Right now, we have about 600 test kits that are, you know, still in stock and we are now determining what's the best utilization of those kits because sitting, waiting doesn't do anybody any good. And we're also, we want to bridge the lack of availability, you know, on the retail side and that seems to be coming out the other side, too. The stocks, the shelves seem to be stocked, you know, and then they are readily available. So we've got, we are in the process of discussing what is the best utilization of what we have left here. And, you know, on that same spirit, I just learned that Newbury Port, they have, they're going to be distributing on Saturday, they acquired 5,000 kits to their residents and I think they're going to be doing from the DPW. I just learned this like an hour and a half before I came to the meeting. I do have a call into their EMD, their Emergency Management Director, and I expect to be talking to him tonight. He said he'd give me a call, you know, after, after eight, so it'll be a little day late and a dollar short and finding out what that's all about, but I'm very interested in that. I, you know, what they did, how they did that, where they got them, what, you know, what the program is, so hopefully we'll be able to capitalize on something that they were, you know, they, they made happen. So more to come on that.
Thank you.
But that's, that's an interesting development there. And I also know.
Madam Chair, a question?
Sure.
What about some of the COVID money we got, can we buy kits? I mean, there's, there's a lot of COVID money that came in and I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we can buy kits, but I think, I think as taxpayers have, they should have access to these at any cost. I mean, that's why the tax, that's why there's so much COVID money being distributed. I just think we should have more kits available to more people, even if we have to go out and buy it.
And that's hopefully, that's what, yeah, that's what we're going for, Mike. That's what we'll be, that's what we're, you know, that's the next step now that they're available and, you know, that's a conversation that the team will be happening, you know, with the team probably in a few days.
Because the president said, there's, he's just, there's nobody should be paying for a kit, period. And I know there's a ton of people, I mean, CVS was sold out today. I mean, there's no kits available in the drugstores.
There's not many kits, there's not many kits available anywhere, Mike.
Well, like I said, Newbury Port's giving $9,000, there's got to be a kit somewhere else.
Well, that's, again, that's, that's what, I'm going to be aggressively, or our team will be aggressively looking into that, absolutely.
Can you keep us updated with an email while I make out with that, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that it gets out, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. And also I just learned, I got an email, I don't know who else it might be on the chain, but Governor Baker has announced that his administration is, has requested 26 million antigen test kits to be received over the next three months. So that's going to mean something, too.
A lot of them are going to the schools, but they're definitely going to.
The earmark is the schools and also there's the caveat of availability as far as shipping and distribution, so great to request. I'm, I'm, let me, you know, show me, tell me about it. I want to see them, you know, so we'll see how that pans out. But hopefully, there's going to be some relief coming there, too. So there's a lot going on with that, you know, there's a lot, you know, that's, that's the focus now is let's get the testing squared away, you know, let's get people knowing what they're dealing with and maybe, you know, getting some of this under control.
So I have a question. The, the testing, the numbers that you said that are climbing?
Mm-hmm.
Those are only numbers that are reported to the Department of Public Health, right? So if you test at home and you don't report that number, those are not captured in that number, correct?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
That's a huge number.
All right, hold on, Mike. Jerry?
This, this doesn't affect you, however, I did get an invitation from the Council on Aging for their game night.
Mm-hmm.
And I was surprised the invitation didn't say anything about mask required or anything like that, so I was, I was surprised the Council on Aging didn't, didn't put a little footnote, you know, bring a mask.
I, I can't speak to that.
I know you can't.
But it's definitely something, I'm sure, you know, Cindy's been very, very proactive and very integral in, you know, in this program. I'm going to guess that the people that she, that are coming know because it's posted over, it might just be they know, which isn't, it should still be reminded, I, you know, know, maybe.
So is it posted in front of the Council on Aging that you have to have a mask in order to come in?
The protocol that, for town offices.
Recommended.
Yeah, the, the.
Recommended, masking is recommended, that's the right word.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, is, Newbury is a member of the very successful and efficient Lower Merrimack Valley Regional Collaborative. Every Monday evening from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the month of January, they'll be distributing booster vaccines at the West Newbury Annex Building. The appointment link is posted on the town's website, and there's a link on the Police Department website as well. There's so much info, I can't say this enough, there's so much information, it's evolving so much, we're, we're pretty good at keeping our website up to date on this topic, and I know the town website is as well. What I suggest, everybody is, for the up-to-the-minute stuff, go to the website links, and you can't, it's like right there on ours, it'll bring you right to everything you need, all the links that you need, and, you know, the latest and greatest, because for all I know, just after I've given this dissertation, what we're doing, it's changed.
Right.
You know, and it's really been that fluid, and it's been that crazy.
And I think it will continue that way until we're over the surge.
Yep, yeah.
Actually, on, on that note, Madam Chair, I, I would move that, in the future, at least maybe until, well, they're saying that this, this variant is, is going to burn out by February, so let's hope it does. So I would move that we resume meeting by Zoom until at least the, our two meetings in February.
I'll second that, it's for discussion.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so.
Come with me?
Yes, John, thank you.
You don't want to stay.
I'm going to sit right back there and mind my business.
All right, thank you, John.
One more question for the chief.
Oh, John, what?
I have one more question for the chief.
Sure, I'm back, I'm looking right at you.
How close do you think we are to a mask mandate?
No idea.
In Newbury? Huh?
No idea. We're following.
Newbury, Newbury, Newbury Port's already installed it, I was in it, which saved and installed it, I didn't know, like I says, is it time for Newbury to put a mask mandate?
Yeah, we, we're following, I, I won't make a, I won't even really give a direction on that, Mike, because that'd be disrespectful to my, my team, that's something we will discuss, you know, but.
I'm just saying, it's, the, the surrounding communities are doing it, and I, I don't know, I don't know, I, I reached out five days ago and asked for COVID numbers, and they get them, but I'm, I'm just saying, it's, if other communities are doing it, maybe it's time for Newbury to step up too, Newbury to step up too, because it's, if you leave to Newryans, and you're doing something in Newbury, it's on Newbury Port, it's like, you yelled at, you don't have the mask in Newbury Port, but you do, you don't need it in Newbury. I'm just saying, I think it's time, I think we should make, maybe for three weeks, okay, or maybe for two week periods, every two weeks, but I would make a motion right now to put a mandate back into place in Newbury.
Well, that's something that we're going to discuss with Unified Command, and that's, that's the purview there, and we will recommend.
All right, so, all right.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Mike. All right, thank you, thank you, John. So we have a motion and a, and a second, and I want to go to discussion.
Point of order.
Yes.
Is this smart to vote on tonight since it's not on the agenda?
Well, we just got the, we got the update.
I think you can vote on things like that.
Um, well, I.
Rules, rules keep us safe, thinking and knowing are two different things.
Where's, where's Alex?
Alex is right here, Alex.
Alex, I want to ask you.
I'm not debating the merits of the motion, I'm asking if we are.
Sorry, I couldn't see you with the chair.
This is on the agenda for action.
Okay, so JR, you make a very good point. No, hold on a second, Mike, Mike, hold on a second. JR, you make a very good point, we have Alex here of Me, Talman, and Costa, and I'm going to ask him to advise us on that.
I, I would advise the way that it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question to Attorney Costa?
Are you going through the chair? Hold on, Mike.
I'm, I'm asking the chair, can I ask the question to Attorney Costa?
Okay, Mike, hold on, this kind of, this meeting's kind of getting a little crazy, so you.
I'm just asking a question.
You need, so you gotta, we can't talk over each other, so you want to ask a question of whom?
Attorney Costa.
Okay, so, hold on.
Castro, but that's okay.
Attorney Castro?
Yeah, Adam Castro's my boss, I would never want to make that mistake.
Okay, so Selectman Doyle has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in West Newbury, for 26 years, when something like this comes up, they discuss it, and there is no question, the Attorney General's never questioned them, of a citizen's concerned or a selectman's concerned, because it's not on the agenda, and you can't talk about it. I think it's time that Newbury starts dealing with that, because we hide behind the fact that it's not on the agenda, it's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it. I think it's a crime, okay? This is important right now, and maybe two weeks, it's too late, so I think we can talk about it right now. That's my opinion.
And frankly, I would say, since this is an issue that pertains to the Board of Selectmen and how we proceed and conduct ourselves, it's certainly within the purview of the, of the Board to discuss it, especially where we have this pandemic. I mean, people, people are getting sick, you know.
So I, I have a question.
I'm not debating the merit of the motion.
You're just killing it by the procedure that you're.
Hold on a second, is this something?
I gotta say, I gotta say one thing.
Hold on, hold, hold.
I'm trying to follow the rules.
JR, hold on a second. Is this something that I, does this something I need a vote of the Board to, or can, as Chair, can I just make the decision on my own, that we're going to go into remote meetings? Moving forward.
I, I, I would have to, if, if the Board, this Board, we're going to meet remotely going forward.
Yeah. Until the surge is over.
I, I would rather look into that further than making that decision ad hoc.
We're getting nailed for open meeting this, and open meeting that, and I mean, and now, I mean, I don't know where, and, you know, do we get reported by people? I don't know, I have no idea how I take my rules, where I take my rules anymore. So it doesn't make sense to me.
The Board can vote it. And the Chair can.
And we just asked Town Council, put it on the agenda for next meeting. We're asking us, kids to go to school.
I, I mean, I, I haven't reviewed that policy, I'd like, I'd like to review it. I, I can't, I can't make, advise you thoroughly and properly, if I haven't reviewed it.
I understand, I understand, so I think, what I'd like to ask you to do.
Yeah.
Is see if you could advise, advise the Chair, if there's something that the Chair can decide, we're going to go into remote without a vote of the Board.
Of course.
Okay? That's one. And then, because the other thing is, I've had other boards and committees ask to go to remote right now.
Mm-hmm.
I know the Planning Board currently does, and I know the Conservation Commission does. Martha, do you know if there's anybody else that does?
I don't know if anybody else is doing it right now.
But given the surge that we're having right now, I'd like to give the Chairs the opportunity, if it's something that they can do on their own, if I don't need a vote of the Board, I think, if you could just find that out for me.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find it out first thing in the morning, and we'll let you know.
Okay, so we had a motion, and we had a second, and we had discussion. So all in favor of, Julie, Julie, can you read back the motion?
Jerry had moved to resume the Select Board meetings via Zoom until after the February
So we're going to have to call a roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
No.
JR Colby?
Abstaining.
And Alicia Greco's going to vote no for now, the next time, because I think I can do it on my own. Okay, so that's the Emergency Management Report, we don't, we have no Town Administrator's Report tonight, correspondence, we got a letter from Xfinity regarding some changes to, sorry about this, changes to their service. We also got the OUI list that keeps going on and on and on. As part of our ongoing commitment to keep you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV, we wanted to inform you that effective December 14th, 2021, Universal Living Faith Network was added to Channel 1098. Please feel free to contact me at Patrick Sheens Comcast, at Comcast.net, should you have any questions. Very truly yours, Patrick Sheens, Senior Manager of Government Affairs. We also received the OUI last drink data from the State, and I'm happy to say the town of Newbury is not appearing on that list.
You might want to explain it, but people out there, they're going to think, what?
So each, each community in the Commonwealth receives a list, it's, I believe it's an annual list, is it annual, John? Yeah.
We have a nice reputation.
Yes, we do, and it just says where, when you're arrested for drinking and driving, or drunk, drunk driving, or impaired driving, it asks you where you had your last drink. And this is the list across the Commonwealth of where people had their last drink, and Newbury's not on it. So that's good. And I think it's good that the, that the State shares that data, because as the Licensing Board, it is important, it's important to know that, that stuff. So any meeting updates? I don't have any.
Is that one?
I have.
It's some good news, okay, it's like, I've been working with Triton's coaches, and I've been working with Cindy, and we finally got the Snow Angels working together, so all the high school kids that work, that went to sports teams, they're being assigned a senior to snow, and I, I was assigned Erica Jacobson's son, and he came over and he shoveled me out, and I'm telling you, it couldn't have come at a better time for me personally, but also, there were other seniors that, there's, I guess last year, they said, Cindy said, it was trouble getting students, but this year, I, I reached out to coaches, and the coaches have got kids saying, they'll do it, so it's, it's, it's starting to work. And Cindy's so happy about it, and I, I, I personally was thrilled, because it's, it helps, helps seniors right now who are really struggling, okay? And also, if, if you can do it, I know COVID chip nicely, and I guess it's, it's a win-win for everyone, it controls good community, good community spirit.
Thank you, Mike.
Just, Mike, if, if a senior needed the service, who do they contact? The Council on Aging?
They contact, they contact the Council on Aging.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
We have to review meeting minutes, we have to approve draft minutes for the Planning Board Select Board Golf Center on October 14th, 2020. I think these were accidentally fell by the wayside, and we need to approve them now.
Yes.
So.
Roll call.
I'll entertain a motion.
No, no, I recuse, I was not present.
Okay, JR's recusing. Were you here, Jerry?
I was here.
Okay. All those in favor, roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes, and JR Colby is abstaining, is recused. We also to approve draft minutes for the Select Board meeting of 12/28/2021. I'm going to recuse myself from that one, because I wasn't present.
Motion to.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
I'm recused. We have warrants to sign.
Motion to sign warrants.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. We only had, do I, do I need a motion to have, that's just the three of us sign the warrants, or all we need is a quorum to sign the warrants, right?
Yes.
So you guys don't even need to sign, the three of us can sign for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, tonight, we have some executive session. So I moved that the Select Board enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review and approve the following executive session minutes in accordance with Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, and to reconvene in open session to vote and approve said minutes. Executive session on 9/22/20 pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely the Police Chief and Deputy Police Chief. Executive session on 8/24/21 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Newbury Police Association. An executive session on 8/24/21 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Newbury Professional Firefighters Local 5312. And I have a second.
Second.
I need a roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
I should just go through and read all of these, right? So we also have a second executive session. I moved at the Board of.
Let's, let's do those approvals first.
Well, we have to go into executive session, but then I'm going to reconvene in open session, right?
To, to approve those three.
Okay, so we will be reconvening in open session to approve those three, so I'm going to close this down, close this out, send a link, and then we're going to reopen, and then go back into another meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and then go back into another executive session.
Okay, so you're going to send all those links, Julie.
Okay.
Also, is there paperwork, Alicia?
Come again?
You said there was paperwork involved, too, that we're going to get tonight.
Is there any paper, you have the minutes, you, Julie's going to email the minutes.
Yeah, I have to, that's what we got to do. We can't do it until we're in executive session, though, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
So I get, I get to end this one.
Okay, so, end that one. Thank you, everyone.
Motion.
And read out all three.
Okay, so. Can you read, entertain a motion to approve?
What am I, what?
Read it.
Am I reading word for word?
Yeah.
Talk, motions. Executive session one.
Just executive session one, this one, just read that.
Executive session, I moved to Select Board, enter into executive session.
No, no.
No, just read the bullets.
Move to approve, and then read, move to approve, and then read the, the, the following minutes, and then read each of those three minutes.
The bullets.
Motion has been made to approve, already?
You're going to make it now.
All right, I make a motion to approve, and I make a motion to approve these bullets.
Executive.
Executive session, 9/22/20 pursuant to GLC 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely Police Chief and Deputy Police Chief. Bullet two, executive session on 8/24/21 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Newbury Police Association. Executive, I mean, bullet three, executive session on 8/24/21 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Newbury Police Professional Firefighters Local 5312.
To approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
And Alicia Greco, yes.
Now we move back into executive session.
Correct, to, to, for the separate one, yep.
So I'll make a motion.
For the second executive session on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to go back into executive session.
Number two.
I moved the Board of Selectmen enter an executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 8, Section 21A3, to discuss potential litigation related to the July 12th, 2021 Open Meeting Law complaint filed against the Board by Jack Rebicki, whereas the discussion of this matter in open session would be detrimental effect on the Board's litigation position, and the Chair so declares it, and to review the Board's July 27th, 2021 executive session minutes recording regarding said open meeting conflict.
Okay.
Make sure I get this before I get.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I need a roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?